Next, touch details. You'll notice there's quite a selection of bulky items to choose from. Once the item and quantity are selected, you can help us by providing even further details by touching the select location of the item. You can even add more than one item to this service request. Once all the items are added, touch Done. If you haven't registered for an account, we'll talk more about that in just a bit. You can enter your contact info or choose to submit anonymously. Next, you can add a photo by taking one using the app or by using an existing picture on your phone. It's especially helpful to city departments if you include comments about hard-to-find locations such as "next to this address in the vacant lot under the palm tree." You'll notice a targeted service date has just been added. This is the date you will need to have your bulky items out on the curb by 5:00 a.m., if not out already. Then, all you need to do is hit Submit and confirm your service request, and you're done. A service request number will pop up. From here, you can create another request for this or another location, return to the homepage, or exit the app. But before you go, you'll see we provided the information of the appropriate agency handling your specific requests. This will help you follow up if necessary. Let's go back to the homepage to check out some more details. Now, in order to view your service request, you first have to log on or register for an account. If you have an LADWP online account, you can use that login information. If not, you can still create your own MyLA311 account. The process is very similar to most online accounts. You can also find city facilities near your current location by selecting the City Info icon. You can either enter an address or touch the funnel icon to narrow or expand your search. Simply select the areas or services you are looking for, and then touch the icons that pop up on the map. You can look up information about city services from our City Services directory. Other options include City Bill Pay and even viewing city social media feeds using City Hall News. Now, if you prefer to use the service from your computer, simply go to lacity.org and click the 311 icon, and then select your choice from the menu. MyLA311, it puts the power of City Hall in your hands.
Did you know that our great city of 469 square miles boasts nearly 7,700 short-term rental listings today? 469 square miles boasts nearly 7,700 short-term rental listings today. Managing this behemoth is no easy task, which is why we turn to innovative technology to ensure that we run an efficient program and maximize staff time and resources. Recently, Los Angeles City Planning's Home Sharing Unit launched the first-of-its-kind compliance system, an online system that no other city currently has in place, using secure algorithms to remove ineligible rental listings on sites like Airbnb. The truth is, we cannot afford to have our housing units illegally removed, converted, and even used as short-term rentals at a time when housing is scarce. Which is why in 2019, we advanced a new policy that the City Council adopted to allow Angelenos to legally share their primary residences as short-term rentals. This program offers cash-strapped residents the ability to earn site income, with all the necessary safeguards still in place. We do this to preserve, protect, and ultimately to safeguard our neighborhoods and its residents. For more information, visit our website at www-planningthenumber4la.org. You can also contact the Home Sharing Unit at area code 213-202-5464.
In 1970, Latinos were a mere 5% of the population, and yet at that time, they were 20% of the fatalities in Vietnam. As young Mexican-Americans, we called ourselves Chicanos during that time period, with a great sense of identity and ethnic pride. And so that summer, many of us were involved in these efforts called the Chicano Moratorium, the efforts of Chicanos to stop the war and to stop the overpresence of Chicanos as the fatalities of that war.
1970, porque empieza mi identidad pública chicano. Empieza la idea de una obligación a la comunidad, no solo a mi personal o a mi familia, pero también la responsabilidad de nosotros líderes tenemos para trabajar por la comunidad. Y esta idea, este valor empieza esta fecha del 29 de agosto de 1970.
Something like 7,000 Mexican-Americans had died in Vietnam, and the boxes, aluminum boxes, were coming back to East LA, and we're saying, "What's going on? Why are so many of us dying in Vietnam?" And so we wanted to bring a stop to that, but also we wanted to bring a stop to the police brutality in East Los Angeles, and that's why we got involved to demonstrate, to voice our opinion. The demonstration is a poor man's press to express our grievances. And the Moratorium itself, on August 29, 1970, I would say to some degree was a showdown between the police and the community. Because the police came and they tried to clear the park. They came in, hitting people on the head, arresting people, I think 500 people were arrested. The people had no choice but to fight back. One riot turned into three more riots, and it just continued on to this point where Ruben Salazar stopped here at the Civil Dollar at this location, and he was shot in the head by a tear gas projectile which killed him.
So, you know, we went from exuberance and excitement and, you know, great unity and pride to then being attacked and being, you know, fearful, scared, being, you know, extremely conscious about things that were going on around us, watching the police, you know, club people, looking at the tear gas grenades and trying to avoid them, trying to move people around so that they could be safe. And it was, you know, it was chaotic. And, you know, at some point, they overwhelmed the park, and I took off running right down the street. And then a car just pulled up on me and my friends. And fortunately, you know, I was a pretty good athlete then, and I was able to just scale the fence and run into a house where people were opening up the doors for people to come in. And they served us, you know, water and coffee and chocolate, and they shared their food with us. And everybody was talking about the Chicano movement and police brutality and all these things. And, you know, mostly I listened, because I was young and I was learning.
I was co-chairman of the Chicano Moratorium Committee and put it together. LeBron Rais is a civil rights organization to make sure that things can take place in regards to the protection of our community, in regards to our civil and cultural rights. So it's very important to bring back the cultural rights, especially in the schools, but also to bring back our civil rights in the streets, so we are respected with dignity. I was with Ruben Salazar at the park when the riot took place. He's a lifetime reporter. He dedicated his whole life to writing stories about Chicanos and writing stories about La Raza. And he came out here to California, became a reporter and a prize-winning reporter for the Los Angeles Times.
To me, he's a hero. Those days, they were very racist. They were very, you know, you know how it must have been. And he changed all that. He was our voice, and they took him away.
He was in many ways a voice for the changes that came, a person who could see it and then articulate it for our community. That kind of generational change that took place and the way we saw the world as Mexican-Americans and who saw that not where we only going to be focused on assimilation, but we're also going to protest, and we're also going to speak out. And so it's a great loss to lose an incredible leader like that. And appropriately, there are parks and schools, libraries named after him, as they should be.
Ruben Salazar did not go in vain. I mean, as a result of what happened that day, it had impact on society, and it brought an end, helped to bring an end to the war in Vietnam. But it also started to open the doors in the colleges and universities, and also started opening, jobs started opening up in the city and the federal government and state government.
There were so many great leaders who emerged from this, and we need to understand that, that we should be proud of what we had done as organized this incredible peaceful protest against the war. And also acknowledge many of the great figures who came from there. You know, Gloria Molina was here, Richard Alatore, Esteban Torres, my mentors at the time, Antonio Hernandez, who was in college, Samuel Paz, Maria Elena Yépez, Luis Garza. There are just incredible people who were here who went on to stay engaged and involved, and that we, as a community, need to continue to do that.
What happened over the years, over the 50 years, things have gone bad, and we've lost a lot of the gains that we got in the past.
We need to be unified, we need to stay focused. We take advantage of our advantages. We have an ability to make peaceful change in this country in November, and we need it, as urgent as can be. And we need to take advantage of the power of the vote for the interests of our community, for kids in cages, for 7,000 kids separated from their families, for people who are still being killed, shot by the police unnecessarily for an opportunity to have a quality education. Those things still remain our goals, our hopes, and our aspirations, and we should continue to fight for that.
To save lives, it's important to have movement.
I used to be very, you know, to myself conservative, but I still did activism. And it's changed me totally, like overnight. And I have a granddaughter that's a teacher, and she's going for Chicano studies. So I'm going to give all my material that I have to her, so she could teach it. Chicano, Chicano power everywhere and anywhere. That's never going away, and I don't want the youth, you know, to have that diminution out of their lives, because that's very important. That's your identity.
It's very important to bring back the cultural rights, especially in the schools, but also to bring back our civil rights in the streets, so we are respected with dignity.
We've learned that it's important for us to keep our eyes on the prize, to have a vision and stay focused. I think we see an expression, a manifestation of a desire for unity between communities, obviously with young people, the African-American community, and the young Latinos, young Chicanos. And I hope that we take from this event the lessons that we learned, and that is to be organized, to be unified, to register, to vote, and to vote. We can make those changes. The power of the vote is an incredible peaceful tool for social change in our country, and we need to use it.
Hoy, el poder de Chicano es el voto. Nosotros tenemos una perspectiva más grande y estamos... Exceptan que en parte somos una comunidad, un pueblo inmigrante. También exceptan que tenemos una gran historia aquí de décadas, de muchos muchos años, ¿no? Y nosotros estamos hoy con una perspectiva más grande internacional. Pero todavía tenemos los problemas de nuestra comunidad, en nuestras comunidades. Acceso a la educación, una batalla contra los abusos de la policía, ¿no? Y queremos, bueno, justicia por todos que viven aquí.
These protesters and dreamers are going to be the future political, social, and cultural leaders of our community. So let's understand that and embrace that and applaud that. But remember, you're trying to make change and influence people, and that's not easy. That's a lifelong endeavor for many of us. And so be constructive, be positive, and be safe.
Hi, I'm Los Angeles City Council member Paul Carruths, and I'm joining the hashtag #MaskUpChallengeCA campaign to talk about why I wear a mask every day. As the spread of COVID continues, public health officials say that the number-one barrier to halving the spread is that every single person needs to wear a mask every single time they encounter people outside of their household. So that means walking your dog, going out to get your mail, encountering someone else hiking on a trail, or even putting it on before you leave your car. Researchers agree that if we achieved even 80% mask compliance, it would drop the spread by 50%. Wearing a mask is not a political statement, and it's more than just common courtesy. It's about protecting not only your own health, but the health of others. Masks are not only for people with underlying conditions. The spread of COVID-19 is up more than 70% for people under the age of 50. You don't need symptoms to be a carrier. Remember, COVID kills, so please wear your mask and join the hashtag #MaskUpChallengeCA and challenge five or more friends to make their own video about why they wear a mask every single time they go out.
Hello, Los Angeles. My name is Joanne O'Brien from the Medical Services Division for the City of Los Angeles. I am here to ask you and your family to get vaccinated for the flu this year. Flu vaccines help your body develop antibodies against the flu virus. It takes about two weeks for your body to develop these antibodies. These antibodies provide protection against this year's flu virus. Now, more than ever during the pandemic, you should get a flu vaccine before flu viruses begin spreading in your community, especially since it takes about two weeks for a vaccine to provide protection against the flu. It is likely that both the flu and COVID-19 will be present at the same time this year. Make plans to get vaccinated early in the fall before flu season begins. A flu vaccine is needed every season for two reasons. A person's immune protection from vaccination declines over time, so an annual vaccine is needed for optimal protection. Second, flu viruses are constantly changing. Because of this, flu vaccines may be updated from one season to the next to protect against the viruses that research suggests may be most common during the upcoming flu season. Flu vaccines are offered in many doctors' offices, clinics, health departments, pharmacies, and college health centers, as well as many employers and even some schools. For more information on flu vaccines, please head over to the CDC's website at cdc.gov/flu. Stay healthy during the pandemic and protect yourself from the flu.
Good morning and welcome to the LaSalle City Council. Today is Wednesday, September 23rd. I'm Nury Martinez, President of the City Council. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, present.
Bonin.
Bonin, present.
Buscaino.
Here.
Here.
Harris Dawson.
Here.
Corretz.
Present.
Krikorian.
Here.
Lee.
Present.
Martinez.
Present.
O'Farrell.
Present.
Price.
Present and accounted for.
Thank you. Rodriguez.
Here.
Wesson.
Wesson, here.
Thirteen members present in the quorum, Madam President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes of September 22nd to 2020.
Ms. Rodriguez moves and Mr. Corretz seconds next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Bonin moves and Mr. Krikorian seconds next.
Madam President, would you like all items to go forth with today?
Without objection, that would be the order. Next.
Thank you. There has been a request from the Department of Building and Safety to confirm the lien for item 1A, and there's also been a request to hold item 29 for a technical amendment.
Okay.
Item number one is an item notice for public hearing. Items 2 through 22 are items for which public hearings have been held. A corrected committee report has been submitted and posted for item number 20, for item number two. It should also be noted that item number 29 is subject to the approval of the mayor, and a community impact statement in favor of this item has been submitted by the East Hollywood Neighborhood Council. Items 23 through 30 are items for which public hearings have not been held. There is a typo on item 28, recommendation number two, and the correct amount should be 334,900,000. Items 31 through 35 are all items scheduled for closed session that have been considered by the Budget and Finance Committee. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are now before us, members. Do you wish to call any of these items special? Mr. Sadio?
Yes, Madam Chair. For item 21, I would like to move that the council adopt the ad hoc-
Hold on for just a second, Mr. Sadio. What item?
Item 21.
Item 21, thank you. Go ahead.
I would like to move that the council adopt the ad hoc on COVID-19 Recovery Committee Report and the sales transmitter on the council file, stated September 10th, 2020, which includes the controllers instructions as directed by the committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Rodriguez. Any others? Okay, thank you. Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes, Madam President, I wanted to speak to 21 and 22, please.
Okay, are you introducing any amended motions for either one of them?
No, just remarks.
Specials for Ms. Rodriguez on 21 and 22. Members, are there any others? I guess I'll go next. Item 29, I have a technical amendment that's been introduced. Can you confirm that, Madam Clerk? It's being circulated?
Thank you, yes, it is being circulated.
Okay, that's item 29. Any other specials, members? Okay, Madam Clerk, what items are available for us to vote on?
We can vote on items number 2 through 20.
Items through, through 20? Okay, let's go ahead and open the row.
Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sadio.
Sadio, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretz.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Aye.
Wesson.
Thirteen ayes. These items are adopted.
All right, Madam Clerk, let's go, let's go ahead and move on to public comment. Go ahead and read out the call-in information, followed by our city attorney.
As indicated on the agenda, members of the public wishing to offer public comment should call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 160-535-8466, and then press pound. Then press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star nine to request to speak. Let me repeat. Call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 160-535-8466, and then press pound. Then press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star nine to request to speak.
So, to members of the public, when it's your turn to speak, please state which of the agenda items you'd like to speak on. You have one minute per item, up to three minutes total, and if you wish, one minute for general public comment, please speak on the items first before moving on to general public comment. We'll tell you when your time's up. When speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can, and if you're not speaking on topic, or if we can't tell whether you're speaking on an agenda item, you will get one brief warning from me or the president. If you do not clearly get on topic or again stray off-topic, the president will cut you off, and you'll forfeit the rest of your speaking time, and we'll move on to the next speaker. We're going to take 40 minutes total of public comment. The items that are open to public comment are items 1 and 23 to 30. Finally, we're going to use the procedure we did yesterday. As you know, Zoom refigured some of its settings, so what we're going to do is we're going to move everybody into the Zoom waiting room unmuted at once. You'll be able to hear the meeting on that. When we call out the last four digits of your telephone number, please immediately hit star six so that you are unmuted. That's star six. That way, you can tell us which items you want to speak on, and then we'll tell you how many minutes you have, and you can start speaking. Thank you, Madam President.
And, Mr. City Attorney, just go ahead and repeat one more time. What items are eligible for public comment this morning?
It's 1 and 23 through 30. I don't think Mr. Sadio's motion was a substantial change. He was basically adopting recommendations.
All right, thank you very much. Let's go ahead and take the first caller.
Caller with the phone number ending in 7719, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Mr. Previn, we cannot hear you. Hold on for just a second, we're trying to fix the technical glitch. Mr. Previn, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Now, we can hear you. Thank you. Go ahead and tell me what items you want to speak on today.
I'll speak on the agenda items and the general public comment today.
Okay, three minutes and one minute of general public comment. Go ahead.
Okay, thanks. First of all, it sounds like you're going to go ahead and affix the lien before hearing from anyone in the public, which is too bad because it's in our district, in Studio City, and it's one of our favorite massage therapy places. Not sure whether or not that's one of the happy-ending facilities or not, but there's a Studio City cigar and cigarette shop there. There's a Subway, a hair salon that have been penalized brutally by the COVID, and there's a post in parcel where you can get fingerprinting, which could be handy for the local elected, and a notary service as well. And yet, here you are nailing them for a $1,200 lien in a pandemic. So, I'd ask, you know, ordinary the process, if councilmember Krikorian would ask him to step off to the side, and Caro would induce them to provide some kind of a contribution, in which case the $1,200 would disappear. But since nobody's meeting in the hall, I don't know how that's going to happen. Incidentally, thank you for correcting item 28 and making sure that it did not represent a fake number of, oh, it represents 334,900,000 dollars, I guess. 334,900,000, right. Okay, moving on to the other items on the agenda that are, that are fair game, 23 through 40. Thank you so much for the Big Reed National Endowment Program from Cultural Affairs. It's so nice the way O'Farrell is able to gather all of the control over cultural affairs and kind of dole things out in a way that seems extremely high-end, and yet, the city is pulsating in pain. I do, I do have questions about why so much of the budget and finance material is in a section where you can't talk about, you know, for example, the attorney fees in connection with the FBI interviews, conflicts of interest for Nixon's teabody.
Yes, we've already taken public comment on the closed-session items, Mr. Previn. Thank you.
Was that done at another time?
Please stick to items 23 to 30 and 1. Thank you.
Okay, well, I'd like to speak also on the closed-session items before they go into closed session to give a little advisory. That's fair. I think the gang injunction is really taking its toll. We have to pay these off once and for all. It's just an endless kind of circular attorney-
So, Mr. Previn, the item that you're speaking about now is 35, which we've already taken public comment on. If you'd like to go to your general public comment, you're free to talk about it.
Well, I will in a moment, but first, I'd just like to finish on the items. Thank you. In particular, the legal claims. I know Ray Garvin had a case-
Again, Mr. Previn, you're, you're on the closed-session items, and I, I know you know you're on them. So, Madam President, I suggest that we take Mr. Previn to general public comment because that's clearly what he wants to talk about.
Okay, let's move along, Mr. Previn.
I find that, you know, it's kind of a bullying technique because you know I want to talk about the legal claims because that's something that the public should know about, and we've litigated that before. So, it's unfortunate that you're taking the position you're taking, and you always take it, but let's get back to the reality of the situation, which is that public scrutiny is more important than ever, as I was discussing with councilmember Krikorian at the Studio City Neighborhood Council. Journalism is under attack, and people have great ideas about sticking in more ethics people or controller. This is not the way we're going to hold the City Hall and county government accountable. We need a vibrant journalism. We need reporters who are fearless and willing to ask the questions that are necessary. Now, I'm just one guy. I'm not, you know, so active, but we have to have something other than inspector generals. I just want to call it out. The idea that you're going to appoint someone who's going to look after your real estate transactions and your contributions, Mr. Krikorian also tried to minimize that a campaign contribution was nothing compared to a shoebox full of $100 bills, and of course, he's right.
Thank you. Next caller?
Pro quo.
Caller with the phone number ending in 2335, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Joshua Cantong, item 29 and general comment.
You have one minute for each. Go ahead.
Thanks. Hey, my name is Joshua Cantong. I'm affiliated with Strategic Actions for Just Economy, Attendants Rights and Equitable Development Organization in South LA. Sage, myself, and the Right to Counsel Coalition strongly support item number 29, which would allocate funding to Hitz's proposed eviction defense program. I'd like to begin by thanking President Martinez, as well as councilmembers O'Farrell and Corretz for leading the council to this present vote. I'll continue by saying that the eviction defense program is urgently needed, and that it'll function to keep tenants housed in their current position of great vulnerability, which is multiply the crisis that was already present in our city. In the future, we believe that the city should work with the county's State House LA eviction prevention program to create a more synergistic and well-functioning effort that'll serve our tenants well. In the face of a global pandemic and an eviction cliff that threatens the welfare of our poor renters, bearing their status of being disproportionately communities of color, this program is essential, yet this is only the first step towards what's truly essential. We should pave the way to a new Gideon, where tenants have a permanent codified right to counsel, ensuring that no tenant goes through an eviction without a lawyer. The Right to Counsel Coalition furthermore is committed and looking forward to working more with the city leaders to pass the codified right to counsel in the future. Thank you, and I see the rest of my time.
Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you.
Caller with the phone number ending in 6981, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Patricia McAllister, item number 29 and public comment.
Okay, you have one minute, one minute for each. Go ahead, sir.
This is Patricia McAllister. Item number 29, the defense program, the Defense Emergency Ejection Program. The one we have in place is not working. I don't understand. You're not enforcing these things. This, this program went by the federal government a while back, and you're just adding it? Now, I have a problem with this because this is where you guys start embezzling funds, as far as I'm concerned. You want 7 million for one year, and then you want to have an option to have 14 million more for two additional years. I don't understand what you're doing, okay? You're not helping anybody. People are being put out on the street every day. They're being evicted. So, I know this program's not going to work. You're not going to enforce it. You have other programs that you voted on that you're going to do, and you haven't done a darn thing, okay? I'm concerned about where this money is going. This money is coming from Hackler. That's the housing money. This money should not be coming from Hackler. You should be getting my 60,000 black people off of Skid Row and trying to get them some housing, okay? This is going on too long, and you're building another program here, spending millions and millions of dollars. You also have hired a staff. That's a couple of million dollars. This, I want to see an accountability of where this, this money is going and who is being helped by not being evicted, okay? They're being evicted as we speak. I've talked to people who are being put out on the street. It's happening every day. So, you guys are not doing your job. You're doing the same thing over and over again. We need more of you to be investigated, just like Jose Weza, and we need to know what's going on because you're not spending our money correctly. It's clear to me because I'm out here talking to people, and they're being, they're in shelters and they're being put out, and you're just coming up with something six months after we've been shut down. It makes no sense whatsoever what you're doing there, and we want to get back into City Hall. The judge was there. He, he put on a meeting. We'll have our masks on. We want to come back to City Hall. See, I know what this is all about. This is nothing but an attempt overture of our government and to deny us our rights. We want to be back in City Hall. We want to be back in City Hall. Now, can I get my public comment now?
You already took it, Ms. McAllister. You've had two minutes.
Next speaker?
Caller with the phone number ending in 3571, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 3571, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
My name is Caitlin Quackenbush, and I'd like to speak on item 29.
Very good. You have a minute. Please begin.
Thanks. I work with Sage Strategic Actions for a Just Economy. Sage has been a part of the Right to Counsel Coalition since its founding two years ago. Throughout this time, we have been working with partners of the city and county to ensure comprehensive eviction prevention services, including tenant outreach, education, as well as free legal representation for tenants facing eviction. The Right to Counsel Coalition fully supports the city's eviction defense program, and city council should adopt this program today. Moreover, we urge the city to ensure coordination with the Stay House LA program launched this summer with county partners. Coordinating with this existing infrastructure will ensure a speedy ramp up, and it is what is best and most effective for tenants. Finally, I want to conclude by saying these are desperately needed resources to protect tenants now. So thank you for taking this action, and yet, this is only the first step. Los Angeles tenants faced a housing crisis before COVID-19, and the pandemic has turned that crisis into a catastrophe. But the impact of this pandemic on the financial security of households, as well as the underlying vulnerabilities faced by low-income renter communities, will be with us long after there's a COVID-19 vaccine, and we need long-term solutions.
Thank you, Speaker.
And one of the solutions is to codify the right to counsel for renters facing eviction through an ordinance. A permanent codified right is more likely.
Thank you, caller. Next speaker?
Caller with the phone number ending in 1108, please press star six.
Yeah, hi. It's Daniel Gus. All items and general public comment, please.
Okay, three minutes for all items and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Okay, great. Item number 29, I'm going to echo our late friend John Walsh and say, when you do something good, I want to be, especially being a critic, I want to be the first one to compliment you on that. That is where all of your efforts should be focused on something like emergency efforts to prevent eviction. That said, I want to echo what Patricia McAllister said about accountability because if we're taking millions or tens of millions of dollars that are not helping these people, we need better accountability. So it's a great idea, but it doesn't seem like it's being used effectively. So I want to applaud the idea, but I want to back what Patricia McAllister said, that we are concerned that it's just another program where tens of millions of dollars, excuse me, are being questionably used because they don't seem to be effectively used. I also want to back her sentiment about if the judge can be in the courtroom in the city council chambers, we should be also. It can be done logically, sanely, fairly, and safely. I also want to echo what Eric Previn said about item number 29, that this is a, well, I don't know if he said it was a good idea, but in a city that is pulsating in pain, we should not be spending time and resources on grants for theaters, grants for arts, theater renovation. Those are all noble ideas, and I applaud Mitch for pursuing those things, but right now, everything, if we're not in that room, everything that is not emergency, that is not life and death, that is not homeless and safety and COVID-related should be put on the back burner. So 29 is a good idea. We should not be spending time on renovating theaters or getting arts grants, and I am concerned about the use of those funds. I am prepared to go on to my general public comment. I want to bring to your attention a brand-new article from NOCLA.com titled, "LAPD Officer Keeping K-9 Unit Dogs Caged for Days at a Time." These aren't just dogs. These dogs are law enforcement officers, and you should demand an immediate removal of those dogs from this officer, this Joshua Niss, from his possession immediately and immediately launch an investigation into the living conditions of every other K-9 officer in the city. Councilmembers, I have a new article on City Watch LA called, "LAPD Was Hacked: Or Is It Lying Again?" The LAPD transmitted a note about the police assassination attempt on its own system. I provided a screenshot from the patrol cars of the LAPD, and the LAPD denies that that's their message. That puts every officer at risk. Please act immediately to protect the officers. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Mr. Gus.
Caller with the phone number ending in 4024, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Which items do you want to speak on?
Asshole, I want to speak on item one and 23 through 40 and public comment along with closed session, asshole.
You have three minutes plus one minute of general. Go ahead.
Thank you, asshole. As we already know, laws against property during COVID-19 are unconstitutional. But if you wear a face mask, nigger, you are protected by the state. Is that correct, Mr. Attorney's Office of Mike Fures? My understanding, according to Gavin Newsom, ordinance number 21445 requires Code Section 8634, oh, I'm sorry, the wrong fucking city, uncodified urgency for protection for rent repayments. Now, like the last speaker from City Watch, who stayed good opinions about jackasses like you, should understand the hardship during a pandemic, how ineffective you are when you suppress people by the shutdown under emergency. And I must agree with the African-American woman and the Caucasian gentleman who spoke in the very beginning regarding emergency item 29. You jackasses don't know about accountability, let alone do you not understand effectiveness as well for what is not an emergency during a non-essential crisis. Am I still on topic, asshole? Because you're not interrupting me. You're doing very well behind that glass cage.
And now I'm interrupting you. Get back on topic, Mr. Herman.
Oh, sorry. Let me get back on topic. And then regarding what the other participants were saying regarding during the COVID hardship, I want to know what the term racketeering means because there's been a lot of racketeering going on during the homeless crisis, and knowing for a fact that a judge had a closed, non-transparency hearing with you jackasses is very disarming. I said items. Like I said, asshole, in the beginning, item one, 23 through 40, asshole, public comment and closed session. Let me just go to my general public comment.
Good.
Thank you, asshole. Now, regarding ATU SC 1962, RICO, why are we not investigating the criminal attorney there whose corruption with Jose Weza should be interviewed for his participation of a pattern and practice of corruption? Just like Breonna Taylor, who got shot only by 10 bullets, you fucking criminals. When you put the rifles to Wayne Spiller's head out there in Van Nuys that night, you should have thought about what the fuck you were doing. You really should have thought about what you done because the asshole beat you without an attorney, moron. He beat you without an attorney, moron. So the services under RICO, ATU SC 1962, and 42 U.S.C. 1983, God bless Jennifer Cox from Long Beach.
Thank you, Mr. Herman.
Caller with the phone number ending in 7251, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Natalie Cohen, item 29 and general comment, please.
You have one minute. Go ahead. I'm sorry, one minute for each. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm an attorney with Pathetics Preventing and Ending Homelessness Project, and I'm speaking today in part of the Renters' Right to Counsel Coalition, RTC Coalition, which consists of community-based organizations, legal service providers, and sliding-scale fee-for-service legal providers in LA County. We're united in seeking a right to counsel for tenants to provide comprehensive eviction prevention and defense services in our region in order to stop displacement of families, the destabilization of our community, and rising homelessness. We strongly support item 29, which would allocate nearly $10 million for an emergency eviction defense program, and we'd like to thank Council President Norrie Martinez and Councilmembers Mitch O'Farrell and Paul Corretts for their leadership on this issue. We also encourage the council to follow the recommendations outlined in HCID's report regarding an eviction defense program. The program should include a public education campaign, eviction prevention services to resolve landlord-tenant issues before court intervention is needed, short-term rental assistance for tenants, and free legal representation for low-income tenants in unlawful detainer cases. Higher-income households would be preferred to fee-for-service legal providers. And we believe the council should also incorporate the emergency eviction defense program into the existing legal framework of Stay House LA. Stay House LA has built infrastructure for tenant outreach and referrals to legal service providers, and tenants are in fact already using the website to access information and get legal assistance. So, you know, I believe that incorporating this program into Stay House LA is the best and the most efficient way to ensure tenants get the assistance that they require. We also urge the council to take further action to prevent displacement. The emergency eviction defense program is just a starting point. The city should codify the right to counsel for low-income renters by establishing a permanent eviction defense program, which would provide free legal representation for tenants in eviction actions. Tenants need a permanent right to counsel guaranteeing no tenant faces an eviction without legal representation.
Thank you, caller. Let's take the next speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in 1248, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak.
Yes, can you turn down your device? Because we're getting feedback.
Um, okay, I'm just on my phone.
Okay, we can hear you now. What items do you want to speak on?
Okay, cool. Uh, this is Mimi from CD4. I'd just like to give a quick general public comment, please.
Okay, you have one minute. Go ahead.
Okay. Um, I just want to point out, like, did you guys see what the Seattle City Council did? They overturned their mayor's veto and are going to defund the police department. So, you know, it can be done. And I mean, it was only 5% so it wasn't even that much, but it's more compared to what you guys are doing. You've been called the most progressive city council in the nation, so clearly, that's not true. Are you guys just going to like accept that? Are you going to develop some of the courage and bravery that protesters have to stand up to the LAPD? It's time to defund them. You saw what protesters had to do to get that in Seattle, right? Like, it wasn't just politely asking for the council to do it, and we will do the same shit here if that's what it takes. We won't stop, so you might as well set the L and get on our side.
Speaker, I'm not sure what item you're on.
I said general comment.
Ah, all right.
Thank you, caller.
Uh, he said it let me, that I don't get a finish? Amazing.
Next caller?
Amazing.
Call in user one, please press star six. Call in user one, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 0240, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Uh, John Parks, and I'd like to speak on item number 29.
Okay, you have one minute. Go ahead.
Good morning, councilmembers. This is John Parks with the Coalition for Economic Survival. CES, as a member of the Right to Counsel Coalition, fully supports adoption and implementation of item 29. This will be a necessary step to create a codified eviction defense program for the city of Los Angeles. Although numerous emergency protections have been passed in order to protect renters across the city, tenants are still being evicted. Item 29 must be adopted to prevent further waves of eviction which are ravaging our communities. We urge the city to coordinate with Stay House LA, the right to counsel program across LA County. This program has been an extremely important tool for eviction prevention, and current efforts will be bolstered with the adoption of item 29. Tenants desperately need permanent right to counsel programs as proposed in this item to create informed and resilient communities so that no tenant faces an eviction without legal assistance. We want to thank Council President Martinez, Councilmember O'Farrell, and Councilmember Corretts for leading the city council on this issue. Thank you. I'll see you the rest of my time.
Next speaker?
Caller with the phone number ending in 1403, please press star six. Please state your name. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
All items and public comment, niggers.
What items do you want to speak on?
All items, every fucking one, and general fucking public fucking comment.
Okay, you have three minutes and one minute for your general public comment. Go ahead.
Oh, thank you, mommy. Now, let's get to item number one. And Mr. Sadio is very, very upset about item one. CD2, Paul the Goat Krikorian, and a fucking lien during a pandemic for thousands of dollars. Why, during a pandemic, are we charging these poor homeowners that are losing loved ones to this pandemic that are bankrupt and their businesses shut down because we have a homosexual governor and a homosexual mayor that's afraid of wet sand on the beach? Why? Please waive that lien. And I know that he's listening right now. And unlike certain other council members, he's not eating while talking and talking while I'm eating not talking. Now, we have renter protections. Protections from what? They signed a lease. A lease is a legal document. The document says, "Pay your fucking rent, or we'll take you and shoot you in the street while we pay off the sheriff's department." Oh, no, actually, that's, "Go get a writ of execution." Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Thank you, council. I'm sorry. I thought a writ of execution means when they don't pay the rent, they get shot. Oh, well, then deny number 29. The only thing they need to do is just take their shit, put it in their Mini Cooper and leave, as I understand it. What's all the drama about? You don't need an apartment to live in. We have a lot of places you can live. Um, for example, underneath the freeway pass on the 101 in Havenhurst, there's many tents there. Just pitch a tent up and live there. And also, underneath the freeway pass in Balboa Boulevard, you can live there for free in a tent. So why aren't more people taking advantage of Norrie Martinez's "Live in a Tent Free" program? That's what we need. And look at this. We have a $2,000, $200,000 for office and administrative. Notice how it's around? Notice how it's a round number? So, you know what that means? You know what that... Pay the price, baby! So that's it. Call the FBI on item number 29 immediately and tell them, "Nury waived the item in committee." And you know why she did? She didn't want to vote on it.
Please move on to your general public comment.
What?
General public comment.
Oh, it's my general pub... I'll turn it over to my council. Go ahead, sir. Oh, yes, thank you. Um, yeah, just a reminder, next time you have a mayor's staffer call the CHP, and next time when that CHP person calls LAPD and falsifies felony complaint that somebody allegedly has a firearm when they never did in their car, and they almost get assassinated, you're going to get the FBI to investigate every fucking thing you guys have ever done for the past 15 years. So, um, you guys need to tell Mitchell Englander and Mr. Weesar why they're being indicted. March 30th, 2017. You know, I know you don't want to, you don't want to break the news to them. That's the reason the public's not allowed inside CDO. And finally, remember when you ripped out Paul DeSey...
Thank you, Mr. Spindler.
Thank you, Mr. Spinner.
It wasn't the president.
Next caller.
Caller with the phone number ending in 0899, please press star six.
Hello, Kim. Hi, this is Stacey Dawson Sterns. I'd like to make a general public comment, please.
Okay, you have a minute. Please go ahead.
Okay, my general public comment has to do with public comment. It has to do with foul ball. Just because you don't understand what people are saying and how it relates to topics doesn't mean that it doesn't relate to certain topics. So when it's a general public comment, sir, you need to allow people time to speak. You're listening to Wayne, you're listening to the sheep. Why don't you listen to people who are also actually calling in and talking about real stuff? Like the fact that this body has the power to cancel rent and refuses to. And everyone sitting on this council is scared shitless about their future because they know that we're going to vote them all out, and they're suddenly posturing as if they have souls, as if they have any, any concept of care. But you don't. You could defund the police, but you won't. You could cancel rent, but you won't. And I'm just calling to say, we've had it with you, we are smarter than you, we are better than you, we're better at taking care of Los An...
Thank you, caller.
Call in user two, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
I'd like to speak on item 29 and give general public comment.
You have one minute for each. Go ahead.
With regard to item 29, I understand the importance of eviction defense, but I think it speaks to the council's larger cowardice that you can acknowledge this, and I understand the importance of this coalition and eviction defense in any regard. But in a pandemic, you must go further than eviction defense and cancel rent. We can't have, as our homophobic and racist previous caller said, Nury Martinez's "Live in a Tent for Free" program rain across the city. It's not tenable, and I don't think you guys can really justify only stopping at eviction defense as your response to this pandemic. The people of Los Angeles need you to cancel rent, and we know that you have that power even though you guys are all landlords who refuse to exercise that power. With regards to general public comment, Stefan Frabel, you're an irredeemable piece of shit. You're going to burn in hell. You interrupt a specific caller every single week when she calls in. I don't know this caller, but I call in every single week, and you interrupt her every single time. It's impressive how much you target this person.
Thank you, Speaker.
You are a piece of shit.
Just go ahead and take the next speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in 1403, please press star six.
Yes, I'll take a large pizza.
This is Mr. Spindler again. I believe you've already had your four minutes.
Caller with the phone number ending in 0162, please state your name. Caller with the phone number ending in 0162, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
My name is Scott Cranmer. I would like to speak about item number 29, and general comments, please.
Sure, you have one minute for each. Please go ahead.
Great, thank you very much. Under the circumstances, I'd like to say you all are doing a very good job, and I appreciate the work that you're doing for the city. I'd like to, in regards to item number 29, I'd like to add the importance of the eviction prevention. I'm a victim of cyber torture, and I need all the help that I can get. My employment options have been limited due to COVID, and the eviction prevention program helps tremendously. I'd like to move on to the general comment.
Sure, please go ahead.
Like I said, I'm a victim of cyber torture for almost about 20 years. It took me all that time to gather myself to get to a point where I'm talking to you today. Los Angeles needs to adopt the same laws that Richmond, California, has adopted against satellite-based weapons. They are using directed energy weapons to attempt to control actors and actresses in Hollywood, in an attempt to control Hollywood and the narrative throughout the country. L.A. is the entertainment capital of the world and needs protection against mind-control technologies. The L.A. City Council has nothing to lose by passing these laws and everything to lose by ignoring it. If you'd like more information, that can be reached at mindcontrolinformation@gmail.com. I thank you for your time, and I will speak to you in the near future.
Thank you very much, Speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in 1403.
Oh, yes.
Mr. Spindler.
Mr. Spinner, this is your third attempt, sir. You've already, you've already been given time to speak on the items. Thank you very much.
Caller with the phone number ending in 9845, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 2945, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 9845, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
My name is Laura Wimberly, and I am a voter. I'd like to speak on general public comment. I'm a voter in Council District 12. I have the disgrace of being represented by corrupt, unindicted co-conspirator B. And I'd like to remind all of the city council members that there are still active calls to defund the police. And what I'd like to talk about today is the ongoing refusal of Los Angeles police officers to wear masks as required by law. And this is a problem for a variety of reasons. Number one, it demonstrates their contempt for rule of law, their disobeying the laws that they are obligated to uphold by not wearing face masks. It indicates that policing has nothing to do with actual concern for public safety. If they cared about public safety during this pandemic, they would wear masks. It's been demonstrated time and time again to significantly decrease transmission of coronavirus, and their refusal to wear masks is demonstrating their contempt for public safety. Finally, the ongoing refusal of police to wear masks demonstrates that they're really more interested in punishing people than in helping them. So I'd like to propose that we defund the police by suspending police officers without pay who refuse to wear their masks and refiring those who refuse to comply. Suspending people without pay would actually get some compliance that might improve public safety and would free up some money that we could use for actual human needs instead of oppressing people and shooting unarmed civilians. So again, defund the police and at a minimum, make them wear their masks as required by law in all common sense.
Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you, and I yield.
That concludes public comment. Madam Clerk, just prepare to vote on the following items. Let's vote on item number one, items 23 through 28, and item 30. Please call the roll.
Thank you. Blumenfeld?
Blumenfeld, aye.
Bonin?
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino?
Aye.
Sadio?
Sadio, aye.
Harris Dawson?
Yes.
Coretts?
Aye.
Krikorian?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
O. Farrell?
Aye.
Price? Price? Rodriguez?
Aye.
Rue?
Aye.
Wesson?
Wesson, aye.
And back to Price?
Curran?
Curran?
Mr. Price? Mr. Price, can you hear us? Okay, you can hear us. He's waving back. Mr. Price, can you cast your vote, please? Okay, let's see if we can contact his staff, make sure he knows he's unmuted. He's muted. Let's move on to the next member. Okay. Tally the vote.
Thank you. Thirteen ayes. These items are adopted.
Okay, just go ahead and take up the closed session items. Mr. Krikorian, would you like to speak to these items, items 31 through 35?
Thank you very much, Madam President. Each of these items has been considered by Budget and Finance, which recommends approval of the city attorney's recommendations. They're routine matters that can be taken up in open session unless members have questions or comments. We recommend aye vote.
Thank you, Ms. Madam Clerk. Just go ahead and read those into the record and then be prepared to vote on items 31 through 35.
Thank you. For item number 31, in the case entitled Javier Frias versus Glossell Park and Recreation Center et al., there is a recommendation to expend up to $125,000 plus applicable interest in settlement. For item number 32, in the case entitled Mary Lee Lawson versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $118,320.55 plus applicable interest in judgment. For item number 33, in the case entitled Gabriel Abixir et al. versus City of Los Angeles and Jeffrey Eric Joel, there is a recommendation to expend up to $23 million plus applicable interest in settlement. For item number 34, in the case entitled Raymond Garvin versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $700,000 plus applicable interest in settlement. In the case entitled Christian, for item number 35, in the case entitled Christian Rodriguez et al. versus City of Los Angeles et al., there is a recommendation to first extend the term of the existing settlement by six months, and second, modify the settlement to allow class members until June 27, 2021, to sign up for benefits under the settlement agreement.
Just prepare to vote on these items. Go ahead and call the roll.
Blumenfeld?
Blumenfeld, aye.
Bonin?
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino?
Aye.
Sadio?
Sadio, aye.
Harris Dawson?
Yes.
Coretts?
Yes.
Krikorian?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
O. Farrell?
Aye.
Price? Rodriguez?
Aye.
Rue?
Aye.
Wesson?
Wesson, aye.
Thirteen ayes. These items are adopted.
Could I just move on to items called special? Item 21 was called special by Ms. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam President, and colleagues. I wanted to give a shout out to my colleague, Mr. Sadio, for his partnership and collaboration on this very important item on today's agenda. You know, at the beginning of the pandemic, we recognized that we were in a circumstance that required us to act very differently, and we had to do quite a bit in order to suppress a lot of congregating of people for their own safety in order for us to help stop the spread. The impacts of that were really detrimental, obviously, to those that were establishing their business on, on the street vending front. And, you know, through our collective efforts, and Gil and I had spoken offline about some of the ideas of what we could do to help support in the recovery efforts of these individuals, we have now successfully secured resources of $2 million that are going to support the micro entrepreneurship efforts amongst our street vending community. As a result of some of our early efforts here on the city council, I'm proud to say that one of the benefits of what we were seeing coming out of that on the county side also is the effort for the county to fund the creation of some of these approved carts that will be affordable for these vendors to procure for a more, for a more compliant, frankly, effort in our street vending in, here in the city of Los Angeles. So I just wanted to talk about the importance of this effort, that I'm proud that this council, and it's reflective and emblematic of the work that we had already continued preceding the pandemic through the works of Mr. Buscaino and Mr. Price. But I think this is our next step in making sure that we have a very thoughtful process here in the city of Los Angeles, and that we will help this segment of our community that has, they're entrepreneurs in their own right, support them with the effort to recover, just as so many efforts that we've employed here through our resources that we've done throughout the course of this pandemic. So I just want to thank you, Mr. Sadio, for your partnership on this, and colleagues, I ask for your aye vote.
Mr. Sadio?
Madam President, let me say, obviously, thank you very much, very flattered. This program is a reflection of the collaboration that takes place amongst all of us. All of us have street vendors in our districts, and this is an effort for us to put some depth to the challenges that confront us. This goes beyond the sloganeering that we hear every meeting. This really is a look at, can we take a challenging situation and turn it into something that's extremely productive, institutional, and really acknowledges and reflects the fabric, the social fabric of our districts and of our city? I heard someone lament about our efforts around art and culture, and this is in many respects part of that. People need to understand that, yes, while we fully support our efforts, the eviction defense, the quality of life in our city requires more than that. And so while we must do that, we must also look to how we construct the quality of life in the city. It's a very special, unique city, the home of immigrants throughout the Western Hemisphere, throughout the world, and this is one of these important institutional steps as we go forward to figure out how we can really build some foundation for street vendors, help them professionalize their efforts, make sure that the city is safe and secure, the food is good. We know the quality and the taste of the food is good. We want to make sure that it's equally safe and the same quality. And I'm just excited, very excited and flattered to be working with everyone on this council as we move this project forward, so just want to say thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio. Let's go ahead and prepare to vote on this item as amended. Item 21, please call the roll.
Blumenfeld?
Blumenfeld, aye.
Bonin?
Bonin, aye.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino?
Aye.
Sadio?
Aye.
Harris Dawson?
Yes.
Corretts?
Aye.
Krikorian?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
O'Farrell?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Rue?
Aye.
Wesson?
Yes.
Fourteen ayes. This matter is adopted as amended.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to items twenty-two. This was called special by Ms. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam President and colleagues. I, uh, just wanted to, you know, talk a little bit very quickly. Uh, you know, this, obviously, the pandemic has put a great deal of strain on our city workforce, requiring many of them to serve in roles that were not originally assigned to them in, in their, uh, given roles. And as a result, we find ourselves in a circumstance where financially, we know how, uh, challenging our outlook is based on, uh, the forced shutdown of many, uh, operations, uh, you know, from, on the retail side to just everything that we've had to endure, uh, through the closures of regular business as usual. Uh, as a result, we have continued to see members of our city families step up and step into the roles that should frankly be held and led by other agencies. We've seen, uh, members of our police department serve in roles that helped facilitate, uh, some of the most vulnerable homeless populations into the temporary wreck in parks facilities, doing so because LASSA wasn't serving in that role. And failure is not an option when we have to put ourselves in a circumstance where these individuals are going to step up and, uh, serve in these roles because the options, there are none. There are no other options, and it needs to get done. As a result, we also know the tremendous economic impacts to our own city budget as a result of that. And I want to thank, uh, you know, the CAO, uh, through this effort, uh, in advance, for helping to identify where we can start scaling back the roles of our city workforce in doing the work that our county partners should be leading. We've seen some of the substitutions and efforts from Core, for example, uh, relieving our fire department from being the primaries in administering the COVID testing sites. Uh, we need to continue to push and encourage those alternatives from serving our public and allowing our city workforce to go back to resuming the roles that they are prescribed to do. Uh, because we find ourselves in a circumstance as a result of the disaster service worker roles that they've taken on, and we applaud and thank them for their tireless work to help making sure from, you know, from our efforts to feeding the homeless, uh, through the Department of Disability and all of that work, to, again, uh, the administrate, the, uh, administering the testing on COVID tests. These are things that we do, obviously, in an emergency situation. But as this continues to progress, we know the adverse impacts that it has, not just to our budget, but frankly, to our operations. And it's straining us, and, uh, I look forward to us continuing to advance areas where we can start putting our city family back into their, uh, traditional roles, uh, and encouraging those agencies that should provide those primary functions. Uh, frankly, the county with, from, uh, from some of their, uh, some of their service workers to the county Department of Mental Health, uh, all of those efforts, we should be holding them accountable to helping to assure that they're providing the services to our city. Uh, since we are, uh, we have put our folks in the front lines, we, uh, need to make sure that we can put them back to, uh, to their primary functions and allowing us to recover and, uh, do the work that, uh, our residents are expecting of us. And so, I thank you, and I ask for your aye vote.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Let's go ahead and prepare to vote on this item, item twenty-two. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Blumenfeld?
Blumenfeld, aye.
Bonin?
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino?
Aye.
Sadio?
Sadio, aye.
Harris Dawson?
Yes.
Corretts?
Aye.
Krikorian?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
O'Farrell?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Rue?
Aye.
Wesson?
Yes.
Fourteen ayes. This matter is adopted.
Could I just move on to item twenty-nine? Um, just go ahead and prepare to vote on item twenty-nine as amended? Mr. Price?
Madam President, I've been advised by council to recuse myself from this because of personal property ownership I have. I'll be recusing myself.
All right. There's been a request for Mr. Price to recuse himself. Any others?
Uh, and the same is true for me as well, Madam President.
Okay, there's been two recusals, Madam Clerk, Mr. Price and Mr. Krikorian. Mr. Blumenfeld?
I just had a question, uh, on the item.
Go ahead.
Okay, so I just wanted to ask, I mean, I'm, I'm a hundred percent for this. This is a great thing that we're doing. Uh, I just want to make sure that, that the valley is being served, uh, and, and the West Valley is being served of, you know, there's all these family source centers, but there's only one in the valley that's getting any funding. And if we're adding funding, uh, I want to figure out, oh, and I ask this solely because I want to make sure that low-income tenants in Canoga Park and Reseda and the West Valley, uh, are being taken care of. And I'm sure that they are, and that's the intent here, but I just want to hear how that's going to work, um, and, and why, if we're adding funds, would we not also consider funding, uh, the, the one in Canoga Park? It's the only family source center west of the four oh five. And, um, again, there's only one family source center for the entire valley. So, I just wanted to understand and be assured that, that my constituents and the low-income constituents in the valley, particularly the West Valley, are going to be served.
We have, um, is, uh, our general manager on the call, I'm sorry, on the meeting? And, so, are you there?
I am, Madam President, thank you. But I'm going to ask Claudia Monterrosa to address the, the question about the location and of the, so basically, Councilmember Blumenfeld, your question is service to the valley and the closest family source center?
Well, service, I mean, I, I make note that there's only, there's all these family source centers that are getting funding for this, and there's only one in the valley. And then, secondarily, as we add additional funds, and I, I want to make sure that my constituents, I have low-income constituents in Canoga Park and Reseda that often get the short end of the stick because, solely because they, they happen to live in areas that have, uh, wealth that are near them, but that doesn't change the, the poverty factors, uh, that impact them. And so, you know, why not include a family source center, the one family source center that's west of the four oh five? Why did we, why did we choose to weigh it so heavily? You know, on the opposite, you know, so heavily in the, in the city core and, and only having one in the valley?
Right. So, Claudia, do you want to, um, the, the, the general idea is that these are the same family source centers that have been working with, um, residents and landlords on the, um, Emergency Rent Rental Assistance Program? They have staff that are conversant on this and are able to work with, um, families that are, uh, in need of resources to promote housing stability. The, the Community Education Program, the access to legal services component will be available citywide, but this is for people who might need to, instead of being virtually assisted, might want to come in and, and be assisted. And I'll ask Claudia to address how that's going to serve, um, the valley.
Yes, thank you so much and good morning, Councilmembers. My name is Claudia Monterrosa with H Sid LA. And, um, the areas, uh, that happen selected are mostly driven by data indicators that show the highest concentration of need, uh, and where the lowest income families are located throughout the city. This is now a citywide program for the eviction defense, uh, program. So, no person that calls will be turned away. The only requirement for qualification will be, uh, the eighty percent AMI, um, income household, in, uh, household income level. Um, as we potentially, uh, identify future funds, we can expand this to the, uh, to the sixteen family source centers. But right now, for this first, uh, emergency eviction defense program, we are identifying the, the eight family source centers that will give us coverage, uh, throughout the entire city. Uh, for now, knowing that there's more to do, but we are now able with this funding amount, uh, able to provide services to all, um, city, uh, residents in, in the city in terms of calls and, 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 um, providing them with at least, uh, initial information, and if possible, then pre-eviction services and as necessary, legal defense. But the family source center's location will not deter, um, access to this service, Mr. Councilmember.
But I, I appreciate that, and, and again, I want this to go forward. I'm not going to slow it down, but I, I am, I'm putting a pin in it because I am concerned when you say that it's about providing access to folks and who can get, so that they're close by to a center when forty percent of the city lives in the San Fernando Valley, uh, and only one of these centers is located there. And it's pretty far geographically for someone in my district or, you know, throughout the valley and where the, the poverty is, uh, to be able to get there. Now, I know most of this is going to be virtually, so I know it's, it's going to work out, and, and I know you're going to focus on the entire city, and I'm going to, uh, you know, be monitoring that closely and, and, but I would like to get more numbers on, on how that was done because it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't smell right in terms of the, if you're really doing it based on the percentages of poverty, that, it just, uh, it doesn't add up.
Yes, we looked at rental households, and the highest concentration of rental households are in these areas where the eight family source centers are located. The family source centers is also one of the approaches of how we're going to be providing assistance, uh, to, uh, residents in, in need. The bulk of the money is actually going to pre-eviction services and also legal defense, uh, through the contracted services. So, as we move forward on the, uh, design of the program based on the scope of work that has been shared and vetted with the council, we will identify also target areas. And one of the areas may, may happen to be, uh, the valley because there is, uh, special circumstances in the entire valley in terms of, uh, renters and single-family homes, for example. So, we have an opportunity to tailor, uh, the program, and please, please be assured that we will look at all different opportunity to, um, concentrate and also focus the services in the highest needs areas, uh, first. This is the initial rolling out funding for, for this program. And as you may recall, at first, we were only going to concentrate in three zip codes based on several key indicators that identify those, those zip codes as the ones with the highest need. So, now we really have an opportunity to address your needs, and we're happy to, to work with your office, um, as we move forward in the, in this program, Councilmember.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Corretts?
Thank you, Madam President, and, uh, I want to thank you for your good work in breaking this free, um, after, uh, we've been trying to create this program for years, um, home, to address homelessness and evictions, uh, which were, uh, obviously, a serious problem before COVID and now are being exacerbated dramatically. Um, I do want to thank, uh, the mayor and H Sid and the Right to Counsel Coalition, uh, for, for their several years of efforts to get here. Um, I'm excited that we're doing this for, uh, the folks most in need during COVID. But as, as several speakers during public comment noted, um, we need this to be a permanent program. And so, I would encourage our city bureaucracy to, uh, move as quickly as possible to, uh, make the permanent program available so that once COVID is over, uh, we are able to continue this protection and, uh, to keep a number of people from falling into homeless due to, uh, unjustifiable evictions.
Thank you, Mr. Um, Corretts, for your leadership as well. Mr. Bonin?
Uh, thank you, Madam President, and, uh, I'll start by thanking you and Mr. O'Farrell and, and Mr. Corretts on this. Uh, this is an absolutely necessary program. Uh, it's, it's very, very clear that without a program like this, people are going to get evicted. And with a program like this, uh, people who are served most likely will not. Uh, I mean, the, the, the evidence is, is pretty damn clear about what happens to people facing eviction without representation and, and, and what is spared those families that are, that are facing eviction and, and have representation. So, it is a, a phenomenal thing, and I'm, I'm, I'm totally stoked that, that we're doing this. I do, however, have the same concern that Mr. Blumenfeld has. When this was three zip codes and it was, uh, a dramatically underfunded pilot we were talking about a year ago, uh, you know, I was, I was okay with, 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 you know, my parts of the city not being engaged. Um, but, but I do have the same concern that Mr. Blumenfeld has. You know, I, I noticed that there's, half the family source centers are, are funded, half aren't, I get that, the money only goes so far. Some of the, the agencies handle more than one family source center. So, it, it looked to me like the, the agencies that, that, that weren't engaged at all were Watts Labor Action, um, Seventeen Thirty-Six Family Crisis Center in West Adams, uh, Toberman in Wilmington, San Pedro, and, and Latino Resource Center in my part of town and, in, in West LA. You, in, in my part of town, I've got families that are, like everybody, or that are just devastated, that are getting screwed, uh, 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 low-income families in, in Venice and Del Ray and in West LA, um, uh, longtime African-American families in Oakwood and Venice, immigrants from Oaxaca and Guatemala and Honduras in, in Del Ray and, and in West LA. And, um, I understand there's not as, as big a concentration in those neighborhoods. But I also don't want them to, to have less access to help because there are neighborhoods that have more rapidly gentrified. You know, we all want economic diversity everywhere, and I, I take a lot of hits sometimes for supporting and, and pushing affordable housing in my district. And so, I want to make sure we're protecting what, what is there. So, uh, I want to just underscore the same point Mr. Blumenfeld does is as we expand this, I, I definitely want to see the, the other areas engaged. The, the, the question I have is, you know, very few people from, from, from the Oakwood neighborhood of Venice or from, uh, Del Ray or from Satell are, are going to drive, you know, all the way a- across town, similar to, to, to the West Valley. Um, what, what is their method, given that many of these families lack good internet access? What is their method for availing themselves of this program?
Uh, Mr. Bonin, thank you so much for your questions. Uh, hmm, the initial thought right now is to kick off this program virtually, so there will be limited in-person, um, access at this point. Uh, and that is going to be one of our primary, uh, concerns and objectives as we roll this program out in the next, um, you know, two months or so. And, and, uh, our, our primary concern would be to reach out as many people as possible. We're not going to turn people away because they happen to live, you know, far away from a family source center. The family source center's, um, main objective is to provide a housing stability coordinator, uh, per se, and to help those individuals, those that may actually be evicted as a result of unlawful detainment, to find alternative, um, housing opportunities through that person that's being, uh, cited in that, in that location. The first point of contact will be through a contractor, will be either through, um, Legal Aid, uh, Foundation, who will be our lead contractor and thereby, um, you know, really, um, identifying the best path for, for that person in need if it's a, a pre-eviction notice or if it's an unlawful detainer, if it's harassment.[1774.11] And so we will also try to do our best to identify in-person services as needed. But right now, the main focus is to roll this out on a virtual basis, understanding that there is a digital divide in the city. And so that is going to be something that we will include in our programming. But at this point, I don't have details as to how we're going to deploy those services in person.
Does virtual mean by phone as well, not just internet?
That is correct. That is correct. It's not just online, it's phone calling. And actually, a lot of the meetings that are taking place right now are taking place via that process. And a lot has been done via some of these community-based organizations utilizing the telephone. And that is one of the ways that we, we will try to reach those folks in need.
So I'd, I'd like to meet with you offline so we can discuss how to do that most, most effectively in, in areas that don't have a nearby family source center. Last question is, I, I know the, the focus a lot is on unlawful detainer. We're, we're seeing a huge increase in, in the so-called, you know, self-help evictions. In, in what way does this resource help with that? Or do we need an entirely separate tool for that?
Good question, Mr. Bonin. I, we, our services that we are, are going to be deploying include pre eviction services. So any kind of funny looking notice that a tenant may, may receive, a three day notice to quit, we will refer those through our contractor services and immediately make legal advice available. So these things will work hand in hand, either through a CBO in combination with legal assistance. So not legal defense that doesn't come until much later after the unlawful detainer has been filed against that particular household. So our primary focus is to prevent that unlawful detainer action. And so it will be comprehensive and we will work hand in hand with our internal staff that are also, you know, working on the ERAS program and finding, you know, trying to make sure that we're having a comprehensive approach to the types of complaints that we are getting filed with the department and route those and address those appropriately through this, through these services. So we will make sure to put in those elements in place.
Thank you. So let's meet offline and follow up. And with that, I'll close just again by thanking President Martinez, Councilman O'Farrell and Councilman Corretts for the phenomenal work on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. O'Farrell?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Mr. Bonin, for, for those, those comments. Just for clarification purposes, do we have a sense of what percentage actually goes to legal assistance to keep renters housed when they are being unlawfully served with an unlawful detainer by a landlord who is choosing to violate the local and state emergency ordinance? Do we have a, a sense of what percentage of, of this pot of money will actually go to keep, keeping people housed through legal action and representation in the courts?
So councilmember, we have not, there, there's a pot of money that will be going out to the Coalition through Legal Aid Foundation of Los Angeles for both pre eviction and eviction defense. And it can be flexible. So if, if we're able to, obviously the first choice, as Claudia said, is to stave off unlawful detainees, you know, write an attorney letter explaining people's rights and the moratorium and all that. And, and if most of, if that can achieve most of our goals, then we're happy to have a lot of that go into that. If a lot of cases are going to trial, then, you know, that can go to that as well. So about my recollection, Claudia, about 60% of the money in total is going to pre eviction and eviction defense as well as a really robust public education campaign. Because you don't even think to call our number in a shameless pitch to the listening public, you can call right now today to the department's hotline at 866-557-7368 if you're facing, if you're getting one of those funny notices and talk to our rent hotline and get directed to services internally or with the represent, you know, LA represents Coalition of Providers as well. We're making the system that exists a lot more robust through this action.
Terrific. Which kind of leads into my next question, Ms. Sewell, and that is in relation to providing assistance for filing and monitoring complaints related to RSOs. I, I know that our own H Sid LA Department, which you had, has the capacity to also address those related matters. Will some of these cases be referred right back to you if they're pretty basic and simple? So there can be a, a collaboration and, and greater efficiency in terms of the dollars spent to help keep people housed?
Yes, so people can call and say, my landlord, I, I thought I read that I can't be evicted and my landlord is trying to evict me. And we will advise them, we will advise the landlord. And, and then if, if things do not go as they should, we will refer them to legal, you know, legal services. We don't provide legal representation, but we definitely can explain the rules to both sides of the, of the landlord tenant partnership.
Right, yeah. I, I think colleagues, this is a, a real opportunity that unscrupulous landlords who choose to ignore the, the emergency orders are realizing that we've got, they've got the city side standing up for renters and they've got this new resource partnering with the city to take them to court if necessary. So hopefully that'll have an effect that will actually diminish some of the activities of folks who are going to take advantage of people who are on the ropes financially because of COVID-19. This last question I have is related to something kind of what Mr. Blumenfield was conveying. And that is a, the way the funds are distributed. I'm hopeful that they're, it, it's based on demand, wherever in the city that demand may be, and not a calculation that takes into account some sort of distribution amongst the various council districts. I, I want to make sure that the funding goes to the renters in need wherever they are, regardless of council district boundaries. Do you have anything to, to say to that?
Absolutely. Go ahead.
Our goal is to be responsive citywide to, to the needs that, that come up. And a huge part of that response is education of, of people as well as the case management, case by case response. So obviously, in a city with 250,000 renters who are possibly unable to pay their rent right now, this is a beginning, but we're hoping, you know, as, as you said, to make it more robust over time.
Terrific. Well, you know, colleagues, the moment requires us to act urgently to address the income and socioeconomic inequalities that COVID-19 has spotlighted to help prevent the most vulnerable. And we need to, we need to say it, the most vulnerable among us, children, families, the elderly, those who are physically unwell from eviction. So I'm very proud to be part of this and I know we all are. And this falls on the heels of our $103 million rent subsidy program. So, you know, the feds are letting us down. The state unemployment benefits are in disarray. So we have to just do all we can within our constitutional ability at the local level right now and keep hoping and lobbying and pushing the state and the feds to do more. So colleagues, I ask for your I-vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Mr. Rue?
Thank you, Madam President. And I really want to just join the chorus here. And I thank you, Council President and Councilmember Mitchell Farrell for bringing this forward. This eviction defense program is something that we all know is much needed and is a very important step towards fixing this eviction, potential eviction tsunami that we might face. So I don't want to reiterate what everyone else has already said, but I do want to mention that, you know, it's not just a eviction defense program, but we also need to start figuring out and tackling how rental debt forgiveness and relief will be handled. Because, you know, people are still during this COVID crisis getting a mountain of debt and back rent debt. So we have to start figuring out the next steps on that. But I just want to really thank you, Council President and Councilmember Mitchell Farrell for bringing this forward.
Mr. Sadio?
Madam Chair, I also ask for an I-vote on this matter. Just to be very clear from what we've heard, we've heard the department say that no one will be sent away. And so I think that's very important to note. No one will be sent away. It's a citywide program. But the city is, is a very diverse program. And so while there may be pockets of poverty in some of the communities, there are some districts that there is significant poverty. My district is 90% renters. I want you to think about that, 90% renters, 90% immigrant. The median income is, is amazing. And so there's a need for us to put the, the, the most resources where the greatest concentrations of poverty exists, while at the same time maintaining the baseline that we will not turn anybody away. This creates a challenge for us in our district offices and our offices to make sure that everyone in our district is serviced by us. But the fact of the matter is that we don't all come to the same district. Our districts are distinct, they are unique. They have language challenges, resource challenges. And so I applaud the, the department for creating this scheme and this program to figure out how we can use modest resources to make sure that they're the most effective. In particular, I want to applaud the pre eviction services. I know that there are many activists who are enamored with great slogans and concepts of lawyers representing poor people in court. But the fact of the matter is, if you had those life experiences, you know that that's not the most efficient and effective way to address poor people's problems. Most efficient and effective way is one, first of all, that there's an abundance of housing. But two, when you are in these, these difficult situations, is to have pre eviction services, not wait till you're out on the street, but to address these matters beforehand without utilizing all those resources that are necessary, without the delays that courts require and to give tenants the power of knowledge. Let them have the knowledge of their, of their power, of their rights, and let them exercise that. And then let's utilize the resources of the department to inform landlords who, for the most part, as we know, 85% of the city's tenants live in units, buildings of 10 units or less. And so they're not big corporate entities. But there are some, and they give a bad name to the whole community of, of landlords, unscrupulous landlords who have tried to seize upon this moment, who have tried to evict people knowing that it's against the law, who have tried to, through the force of power of bullying, of misinformation, try to move tenants out of their tenuous environments, taking advantage of their legal status, of language differences, et cetera. And these pre eviction services will be vital, vital to every tenant in the city. And so I, again, I, while this program may not be perfect, I, it is significant and one that we should be proud of and one that we should move forward enthusiastically and wholeheartedly. And so I ask for an I-vote on this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio. Once again, members, I want to thank Mr. Corretts for his work in building the foundation two years ago on the right to counsel and defending the rights of tenants. So, Mr. Corretts, a lot of this today is really due to your hard work that you started two years ago. Mr. O'Farrell, thank you for also all your support. And Ann, I really want to thank you and H Sid and your entire staff for working incredibly hard to try to put this program together. You have identified the areas that need the services the most. And I'm sure that we are going to continue to make this program better by providing coverage citywide to all of our residents. But your staff has been absolutely amazing in trying to meet the needs of the poorest people among us and making sure that we're getting to them first. So I just wanted to show my appreciation to you and you've just been terrific to work with. And council, we just need to ensure that everyone, that we're doing everything we can to ensure that we are keeping people housed. And that needs to be our priority now and moving forward to ensure that people have legal representation and that we're doing everything possible to keep people in their homes. So with that, I want to ask for an I-vote. There's been a technical amendment that's been circulated on this item. So Madam Clerk, please just prepare to vote on item 29. CEO has to read the technical amendment into the record. So can you do that, please?
Good afternoon. Emily Zentz Trabontas from the Office of the CIO. And the technical amendment is as follows. Delete recommendations 2B, 2D, and 2E and replace with the following. B, amend the family source centers FSC contracts to expand services among eight FSDs identified in the Homelessness Prevention Program and extend the term of the FSC contracts from March 31st, 2021 through December 31st, 2021 for a new total of $3,960,000, as detailed in the table below. Family Source Center Contractor, All Peoples Community Center, contract number 135725. Original contract amount $125,000. Amendment amount $370,000 for a new total of $495,000. Contractor, Bario Action Youth and Family Center, contract number 135755. Original contract amount $125,000. Amendment amount $370,000 for a new total of $495,000. Family Source Center Contractor, Central City Neighborhood Partners, contract number 135716. Original amount $125,000. Amount to, contract amendment amount is $370,000 for a new total contract amount of $495,000. FSC Contractor, L. Central de Ayuda, contract number 135711. Original amount $125,000. Amendment amount $370,000. New contract amount $495,000. Contractor, L. Needle Family Centers, contract number 135712. Original contract amount $125,000. New contract, amendment contract amount $370,000 for a new total of $495,000. Contractor, New Economics for Women, contract number 135713. Original amount $125,000. Contract amendment amount $370,000 for a new total $495,000. Contractor, PF Breezy Foundation, contract number 135707. Original contract amount $125,000. Amendment amount $370,000 for a new contract total of $495,000. Contractor, Volunteers of America, Los Angeles, contract number 135717. Original contract amount $125,000. Amendment amount $370,000 for a new total of $495,000. A total for all of these contracts, original contracts was $1 million and the amendment amount is $2,296,000 for a new total of $3,960,000. D, submit a substantial amendment to the program year 46 consolidated plan to allocate $10,029,382.62 of the Community Development Block grant COVID funds as awarded to the city for eligible activities in support of the COVID, COVID response eviction defense program. E, prepare controller instructions and make necessary technical adjustments that allow for the use of funds for an amount not to exceed $1,728,380 in administrative costs and the balance of CBG eligible public service expenditures consistent with the mayor and council actions, subject to the approval of the city administrative officer, and authorize the controller to implement these instructions. Delete recommendation 4A and 4B and replace with the following. Four, authorize the controller to A, disencumber the unexpended $1,916,911.18 from the fiscal year 2019-20, H Sid Fund 100-43, account number 00340, contractual services, contract number C-134129 with Southern California Housing Rights Center for the Emergency Renters Relief Program, authorized under Council File Number 19-1329. B, process an early reversion in the amount of $1,916,911.18 to the reserve fund. And finally, delete recommendation five.
All right, thank you for that. So let's go ahead and prepare to vote as amended on item 29. Please call the roll.
Blumenfield?
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin?
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino?
Aye.
Sadio?
Sadio, aye.
Harris Dawson?
Yes.
Corretts?
Aye.
Krikorian is recused. Lee?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
O'Farrell?
Aye.
Price is recused. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Rue?
Aye.
Wesson?
Wesson, aye.
Thirteen ayes. This matter is adopted as amended.
Thank you. Let's move on to verbal motions. Madam Clerk, how many do you have?
There are six verbal There are six verbal motions total.
Okay. Why don't you go ahead and start with the first one?
Thank you. The first verbal motion was introduced by Councilmember Rue to be placed on the next regular council agenda. It is to amend the prior council action of May thirteenth, twenty twenty to change the category proposed use for RC thirty-two in the amount of sixty-four thousand two hundred twenty dollars and twenty-two cents from CD four COVID nineteen emergency response program to the new project typology, ADF, developer-led project, and to allocate sixty-four thousand two hundred twenty dollars and twenty-two cents from PA forty-seven to new typology CD four COVID nineteen emergency response program. Is there a second?
Second.
My, second by Ms. Rodriguez next?
The next motion was introduced by Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez. It is to appropriate one hundred and twenty dollars to, from the Fire Department Fund Number one hundred thirty-eight, account number sixty-ten, to the General Services Department Fund one hundred dash forty, account number ten seventy, for services in connection with the illumination of City Hall on October third. Is there a second?
Second.
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 Second by Mr. Blumenfeld. Next?
Thank you. The next motion is a offer, was introduced by Councilmember Mike Bonin to be placed on the next regular council agenda. It is an offer of twenty-five thousand dollar reward for information leading to the identification, apprehension, and conviction of the persons or person responsible for any of the acts of arson in Venice starting in September twenty twenty. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sadio. Next?
Next is a verbal motion introduced by Councilmember Coretts. Refer to the Energy Climate Change and Environmental Justice Committee relative to requesting the city attorney's environmental justice unit to investigate the code violations identified by the Los Angeles Fire Department in its review of the West Pico Drill Site and to report to council on the results. Is there a second to this motion?
Second. Second, Councilman Bonin.
Second by Mr. Bonin. Next?
Next is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Coretts. Refer to the Personnel and Animal Welfare Committee relative to authorizing the Department of Animal Services to create a new program entitled the Pet Retention Program to provide medical care and treatment for privately owned pets for low-income city residents through private donations and grants. Is there a second to this? Mister?
Mister Blumenfeld.
Blumenfeld. Thank you. Next is a motion introduced by Councilmember Coretts and co-presented by Councilmember Bonin. Refer to the Public Safety Committee as well as to the Energy Climate Change and Environmental Justice Committee relative to directing the Bureau of Sanitation in conjunction with relevant city departments to develop a healthy soil strategy for the city to support urban agriculture, address carbon sequestration, and increase water capture, and to solicit input on these issues from local universities, non-governmental organizations, and relevant governmental agencies.
Second. Second.
Second by Mr. Rue.
Is there a confirmation, uh, Mr. Bonin for?
Yes, there is. Thank you.
Yeah, he's.
And, uh, just for the record, uh, Madam President, uh, for item twenty-nine, the correct number, number of ayes is twelve, and that matter is adopted as amended.
Okay. Any others?
Uh, no, that is all.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Buscaino?
Thank you, Madam President. I have a lengthy motion, so bear with me, colleagues. I move that the council, council action of September eleventh, two thousand nineteen relative to the San Pedro Little Italy Project, CF nineteen dash ten forty-three, be amended to direct slash authorize the Bureau of Engineering to prepare, process, and execute the necessary documents and/or payments to Gensler, a city consultant, to move forward on the next phases of a more detailed analysis and design work for this project, utilizing the pipeline franchise revenue portion of the Council District Fifteen Real Property Trust Fund already set aside in the original council action and subject to the approval of the city attorney as to form, if needed. I further move that five hundred thousand dollars in the pipeline franchise revenue portion of the Council District Fifteen Real Property Trust Fund Number six ninety-seven be transferred appropriated to the account in the Engineering Special Services Fund Number six eighty-two dash fifty, entitled San Pedro Little Italy Plaza, for planning and design services to be provided by Gensler for the San Pedro Little Italy Project located at a city-owned plaza next to the San Pedro Municipal Building in Council District Fifteen. For the move that the Bureau of Engineering be directed, authorized to prepare and execute the necessary documents with and/or payments to Gensler or any other agency or organization as appropriate in the above amount for the above purpose, subject to the approval of the city attorney as to form if needed. I further move that the council find that the services to be performed by Gensler are for the performance of professional, scientific, expert, technical, and/or special services of a temporary or occasional character for which competitive bidding is not practical or advantageous, and that the work be performed more economically or feasibly by independent contractors than by city employees. And lastly, I further move that the Bureau of Engineering be authorized to make any corrections, clarifications, or revisions to the above fund transfer instructions, including any new instructions in order to effectuate the intent of this motion, and including any corrections and changes to fund or account numbers, said corrections, clarifications, changes may, may be made orally, electronically, or by any other means. So help me God.
Second.
There's a second by Mr. Coretts?
Thank you.
Any others, Mr. Buscaino?
That's it, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lee?
Thank you, Madam President. I have a resolution we're introducing, uh, for the Get Together Foundation. Uh, this is an organization, uh, in, um, on April twenty-fifth, we partnered with to have a telethon, uh, right after the stay-at-home order was issued to, uh, safer at home, sorry, at home issue was issued. And we organized a telethon, understanding that many people here in Los Angeles were, uh, you know, we are the entertainment capital of the, of the world, and many other people were in the entertainment industry were, uh, uh, in their homes also. And they invite us into their living rooms to raise money. Uh, we raised hun, over, uh, we raised hundreds of thousands of dollars to, um, donate to the mayor's COVID fund to help, uh, our frontline workers. And we had, uh, performers like, uh, Carole King, Sheila E., Smokey Robinson. I got to introduce, um, uh, Rick Springfield, and it turned out to be a great, uh, event. And so my therefore, uh, is that it now therefore be it resolved that without partners such as the Get Together Foundation and the incredible work they have done over the years, the quality of life in the Northwest Valley would have suffered and the results achieved would not, wouldn't be possible. Thank you, Madam President. That's it.
Second.
Second by Ms. Rodriguez. Any others, members? You see none. Madam Clerk, what's next?
Council has motions for posting and referral. The motions will be posted on the clerk's website shortly after the meeting for the public's viewing.
Posted and referred, members. Are there any announcements? Any adjourned motions? Mr. Buscaino?
Thank you, Madam President. We lost a beloved member of our Italian-American community here in San Pedro, Antonella Pizzo, who passed away peacefully on September fourteenth, twenty twenty, surrounded by her loving family. Uh, she was only sixty-six years old at her passing, born on July twenty-first, nineteen fifty-four in Terrasini, Sicily, to both Matteo and Rosalia Bomarito. Antonella is related to my wife's side of the family. She married her true love, Giuseppe Pizzo, on June twenty-eighth, nineteen seventy-three. Antonella was a dedicated wife, mother, and grandmother. She especially loved her role as nonna. She had beautiful soul and always made people laugh. She will always be remembered for her cheerful personality, a big heart. Everyone who knew her could not help but love her. Her life was a living example of selfishness. I would never forget the times where we would all gather for family events and, of course, our Italian events, uh, in City Hall and San Pedro. Uh, she was always active and engaged and wanted to leave a legacy for her grandkid, her kids and her grandkids, uh, as we highlight who we are as Italian-Americans in Los Angeles and San Pedro. She enjoyed playing pochino and bingo and was always a life of the party. Uh, she was also an exceptional baker. She was preceded in, by her mother, father, and sister, Pina Manjelkacina. Uh, an incredible tribute to her life, a funeral mass was held last week at Mary Star of the Sea. Her, Antonella's family was surrounded by a community of faith and love. Italian-American organizations were represented in an incredible, um, obituary, nulogy delivered by her nephew Joey Bomarito. She is survived by her loving husband of forty-seven years, Giuseppe Pizzo, her son Daniele Pizzo, um, daughter Graceland Infante, her grandchildren, Rosalia Pizzo, Joya Infante, and Antonio Infante, as well as her brothers, sister-in-laws, nieces, and nephews. Um, her daughter-in-law Nicole and her son-in-law Massimo. Antonella Pizzo, you will be missed. May you rest in peace and may perpetual light shine upon you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Buscaino. Mr. Lee?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, unfortunately, adjourning in the memory of Shandor Sandy Winger, uh, the husband of longtime Council District Twelve Chief Planning Deputy, uh, Phyllis Winger. Uh, Sandy passed away on September twenty eighth at the age of seventy-eight. Sandy was born in Cleveland, Ohio on October fifth, nineteen forty-one. No one loved this country more than Sandy. He joined the U.S. Marine Corps from, uh, in nineteen fifty-eight, and his service actually included a combat tour in Vietnam. He was honorably discharged as a corporal in nineteen sixty-two. Uh, what brought him to the valley, uh, Sandy worked in the aerospace industry for over twenty years, uh, local companies including Lockheed Martin, Teledyne, and Lint Industries. But, uh, you know, he was also a big part of this community. He served as, uh, executive officer for the Los Angeles branch of the local Agency Formation Commission, or better known as LAFCO. His work included the completion of the study that assessed the viability of the cessation, cessation movement of the San Fernando Valley from the city of Los Angeles. Uh, he was very active in state and local community fairs for over forty-five years. He was active on several committees. He was on Van Nuys Airport Citizens Advisory Committee. And most recently, he was the president of the Friends of Oak Ridge Park. Sandy was an avid fisherman, Dodger fan, uh, but, you know, I, colleagues, I, I know we all have people that are in our community that feel like part of our office, and Sandy Winger was one of those, um, people for over forty years. Uh, he had an extremely strong personality, and he would never hesitate to, you know, let you know when he disagreed, disagreed with you. But you always knew that he had this district and the city's best interests at heart. Uh, Sandy is survived by his wife and, um, partner in life of fifty-four years, Phyllis, his son Doug, and daughter-in-law Pam, his daughter Sunny, and son-in-law Ken, his two grandchildren Zachary and Jaden, and his dog Rally. May Sandy Winger rest in peace. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Ms. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, I ask that we please adjourn this meeting in the memory of Felipe V. Fuentes. Felipe was born on February twelfth, nineteen twenty-six in El Tigre, Michoacán, Mexico, and was the second son of fifteen children. Felipe worked at the Hacienda de los Torres at a very young age. He later moved and settled in Michoacán where he worked in the fields, taking care of the animals and crops. In nineteen fifty-one, Felipe arrived to the northeast San Fernando Valley and settled in Pacoima. He worked as a laborer for the Laborers, uh, Local Union Three Hundred and worked on the construction projects such as the VA Hospital in North Hills, the Palmdale Airport, and installation of sewer systems across the San Fernando Valley. In nineteen fifty-eight, he began, uh, to work on new construction project at the General Motors Plant in Van Nuys where he was offered a job as an, uh, on the assembly line. Felipe joined the GM family where he worked for thirty years assembling and inspecting cars. Felipe met his second wife, Josefina, at a dance in the city of San Fernando on July fourth, nineteen sixty-seven. He married the love of his life in Saugus, California. Felipe was a dedicated husband, father, grandfather, and great-grandfather for, uh, who loved to give back to his community and his family. He served for many years as an usher at local Catholic churches. He was also an active citizen and participated in the elections of several elected officials such as Tony Cárdenas, Alex Padilla, and his own grandson, former State Assembly Member and Council Member Felipe Fuentes. Felipe enjoyed spending his time with his family, caring for his animals, his garden, and loved playing dominoes. He is survived by his wife of fifty-three years, Josefina, and his children Maria, Laura, Veronica, Yolanda, Felipe Junior, José, and Fernando, as well as over twenty grandchildren and great-grandchildren. May he rest in peace.
Ms. Rodriguez, if I may ask, um, if I can join in on, um, the adjourned motion for Mr. Fuentes, um, I can't remember a time, um, on a campaign that I haven't worked on that Mr. Fuentes would have an entire lawn sign operation in the backyard of his house. I think every single campaign I've ever helped with or ran in the northeast San Fernando Valley, Mr. Fuentes had his, his own touch. And one of the things that was remarkable about him is that he never hesitated to say, I can help. Let me assemble the lawn sign operation at my house. And that's exactly where we ran it out of. So my, my heart goes out to his wife and his beautiful children, um, especially Yolanda, who you and I went to school with. The death of a parent is very, very difficult, um, and I can't, I just can't imagine what they're going through. They were very, very close. And so may he rest in peace, and thank you very much for adding me on that adjourned motion. Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez.
Monica, do you mind adding me too as well?
Of course.
Mr. Rue?
Thank you, Madam Chair, um, Madam President. Colleagues, I'm very sorry to share with you the passing of Jesse Salazar. Jesse was the beloved Executive Director for Pathways L.A., a nonprofit that provides childcare services and resources to vulnerable families. During this pandemic, my team was able to work with Jesse and Pathways on expanding childcare access for essential workers. Jesse's unwavering commitment to improving the lives of all children and their families was inspiring and was central to his work. Jesse gave one hundred percent of himself, whether he was creating a new program, advocating for policy change, or collaborating with others on childcare alliances. His conviction and dedication have left a lasting legacy. His loss is immeasurable to Path, Pathways L.A. and the communities that he served. Jesse was first hired by Pathways as a case manager and was later promoted to coordinator, manager, and then long after that, co-director of the Family Support Services. He understands the critical importance of early intervention, wraparound services for the entire family, and high-quality childcare. Jesse assumed the role of a Deputy Executive Director in two thousand seventeen and ultimately became the Executive Director in August of two thousand nineteen. Dedicated his career to ensuring that all children could meet their greatest potential. And Jesse led many external groups as well, which made great contributions toward improving the childcare system at both the county and the state level. Most recently, Jesse was involved in L.A. Care's Childcare Program, helping to bring childcare to essential workers. Throughout the COVID nineteen pandemic, Jesse worked to advocate for the much-needed funding to help keep childcare doors open and to make sure that they had vital supplies and personal protective equipment. Jesse was an incredibly passionate about providing care to all children regardless of immigration status. His work in, in the community has left a lasting impression on all who knew him. He was an incredible, incredibly cherished leader and mentors, mentor to so many. You can visit his tribute page at pathwaysla.org/jessysalazar. He is survived by his wife, Bertha Rodriguez Salazar, his son Nicholas, and daughter Alexis, his sister Claudia Salazar Matz, Matsumura, his brother- his sister Claudia Salazar Matsumura, his brother-in-law Maiko Matsumura, his brother Tony Salazar, and his father Jesse Salazar. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Rue. Mr. Harris Dawson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Colleagues, today I would like for the council to adjourn me in a very sad adjourned memory of seventeen-year-old Oz Tas Massey, a brilliant young graduate from our own Manual Arts High School. On December third, two thousand two, Sonia LaRose and Ozzy Massey welcomed Oz Tas into the world. He was the youngest of five siblings. He grew up to become a very talented young man who had a strong passion for repairing things, spent lots of times taking bicycles apart and putting them back together again. He enjoyed spending quality time with friends and family and had a great aptitude for entertaining those around him. At the age of thirteen, he created his very own YouTube channel, bringing joy and laughter to its audiences. Producing YouTube content was only a fraction of Oz's talent. At the age of fifteen, he took a profound interest in creating music and would spend countless hours doing so. He used his music as a way to relieve stress and visualize a bright future. Aside from his artistic talent, he was a very loving and kind young man. He was always encouraging his friends and classmates to do well in school. When he wasn't in school, he spent most of his time hanging out with his siblings, socializing, or playing basketball with his cousins. On Wednesday, August nineteenth, Oz Tas was shot and killed outside his South L.A. home while skateboarding. He was taken from us far too soon. From reports, he was not the intended target. He was an innocent bystander or an innocent bi-skater. And another very sad reminder of the deadly prevalence of guns in our city's streets. Oz Tas is survived by his mother Sonia, his father Ozzy, his brother Warren, and his sisters Wendy, Danielle, and Simone. Our deepest condolences go to his family and friends, and may he rest in peace. On Friday, I welcome folks to join a National Day of Remembrance for Murdered Victims to commemorate the memory of Oz Tas and so many others who've been the victim of gun violence and violent crime in our streets. The Peace Ride Parade will begin at six thirty P.M. at the Seventy-seventh Police, Street Police Station, and we'll head down Broadway for a candlelight and prayer vigil. God bless the family of Oz Tas, and God bless the city of Los Angeles. May this young man rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Harris Dawson. Mr. Sadio?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry I didn't, I was trying to get in front of this, but it's more appropriate under announcements. But it's, I think it's essential for all of us. I'd like to announce or note that yesterday was the birthday for one of our most known citizens, one of the greatest Americans in its history and its pursuit of social justice. Reverend James Lawson, yesterday turned ninety-two. The County of Los Angeles declared it James Lawson Day. The school district is going to name a school after him. This is one of our greatest champions in the struggle for nonviolent social justice and peaceful change. I encourage everybody just to Google him, to look him up. He's an extraordinary human being. We're fortunate that he lives here in Southern California with us. I know that I have been extremely blessed by his presence in the city. He was the leader of the civil rights movement. He was the mentor, probably America's greatest mentor, to Martin Luther King, to John Lewis, to Diane Nash, to all the extraordinary leaders of America's civil rights movement. And in the nineties or seventies, he moved here and was the head of Holman Methodist Church. But in the nineties, I got to meet him as I was the head of Local Six-Sixty, and we collaborated for the five years on a seemingly endless effort to save county healthcare and services and jobs. And he trained the leadership of my union in civil disobedience. It was extraordinary because the entirety of the leadership of my union, including myself, were all arrested over that five-year period numerous times in terms of trying to make sure that we could keep the county healthcare system intact. He's just a, an incredible man. He spoke recently at John Lewis's funeral. And it was his birthday. As I said, the county and the school district has acknowledged that. The city should do no less. We should make the efforts to make sure that we can acknowledge a James Lawson Day. I failed to note that yesterday. Most recently, he's been doing a lot of collaboration with Kent Wong at the UCLA Labor Center, and they've published a new book on nonviolence and social justice. Happy birthday, Reverend James Lawson, and we look forward to many more. God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio. Any others? Seeing none, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.